All right, let's call this meeting to order. Appreciate the folks that are here, being here. I can't say the big crowd tonight, but those that are here are very much appreciated, that's for sure. So, thank you for being here. All right, if we can please call the roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
President.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kuzinski.
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Excellent. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. We're going to start off our meeting tonight with a presentation regarding our Tisdore program. Tisdore is the program that we have, we've had in place now for quite a few years, probably six, seven years, and which is the systematic repaving of our roads in town. Obviously, they're all always deteriorating. It deteriorates at different rates depending on how much traffic it gets, but we'll hear more about that tonight. But our program that we've had in place for a number of years and has been in process has been, you know, a first step towards trying to get that all resolved. We recognized a while back, appreciate Rod's work on this, kind of getting things going, that we needed to refresh it, we needed to bring it up to date, we needed to get a new view of what the status of the roads are and put together a more strategic plan. So, that's what we're going to see tonight, and gentlemen, I'll let you kind of introduce yourselves, come on up and kick this off. Rod, did you want to say a few words first? Okay, awesome.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to introduce, this is Nick Hogan, this is James Howell, they're from Kimley Horn and Associates, and they've been working on this revamped pavement management study. And they're just going to basically go through their findings and what they're seeing, and just wanted to turn it over to them. They've done a fantastic job working with us.
Awesome, thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. Well, we have the presentation on the screens.
Yes.
Perfect. So, thank you Rod for the introduction. As you mentioned, my name is Nick Hogan, this is James Howell. We are project managers for Kimley Horn, and we work specifically in pavement management. And so, we'll get into what that is specifically, but basically, what we've done is provided a health check for the roads in the town of Southwest Ranches. Typically, a design life for a road is 20 years, not too many people know that, but what we're doing is taking an assessment, taking an inventory to see where it is in that 20-year design life. And so, we'll get into specifics and our findings and ultimately talk about the plan moving forward. So, there's a lot of different elements that go into a pavement management study. I like to think of it in five simple questions. What do I have? What's my inventory? How many roadways and miles of road am I managing in my network? What condition is it in? So, like that health check that I mentioned, where is it at? Is it deteriorating and needs to be repaired, or is it brand-new? When do I need to do work to fix it? What work do I need to do? Is it a mill and overlay, or a full-depth reconstruction? And then ultimately, the big question is, how much is it going to cost? These things typically are pretty expensive projects to undergo, and so, we want to plan ahead to make sure we have the proper budget to remediate that problem. So, starting with the first question, the street inventory. So, included in our study is 66 miles of roadway network, and the graph is showing on the right here is the amount of age based on area of roadway. And so, a fast stat is 71% of the roads are over 15 years, so they're at or approaching that 20-year design life theoretically. And so, that'll kind of come into play as we're talking about condition in the future slides. All right, so, kind of going along with one of the questions that Nick talked about was the, what condition is it in? Well, to understand what condition is it in, we need to go and follow an ASTM methodology, and this is a nationwide or international methodology for collecting and analyzing the condition of the pavement. So, part of that, kind of the first step, is understanding what type of distresses are on your pavements. So, what type of distresses are we seeing on the surface of the pavement? So, this is a visual inspection that we perform, we're not doing any kind of destructive testing, any kind of geotech or anything of that. We're walking the pavements and taking a look at the visual condition of those pavements. Based on the different types of distresses that we're seeing, we can kind of interpolate or understand what the pavement condition is in. So, we like to break those different distresses into three different types of categories. So, load or a structural-related distress, something that's a little bit more substantial that ultimately relates to maybe a more significant type of repair. You also have age or climate-related distresses, something that, as soon as you put pavement down, it's going to deteriorate. Like we're in Florida, the sun beats it up, the weather beats it up, it's just how pavement works, as soon as you put it down, it's going to deteriorate. And then, there's another one, which is kind of the construction and material-related. The graph on the right-hand side, it's kind of showing you throughout the roadway network in Southwest, or town of Southwest Ranches, is there's some alligators, some structural-related distresses that are causing the condition to drop, and then, a lot of LT or climate-based distresses, and then, some surface deterioration as well. So, ultimately, all those distresses surround to a health check value or a pavement condition index value. And so, the area-weighted network PCI is 77, which correlates to a pavement condition category of satisfactory. And so, what you'll see on the right is a graph that kind of shows the distribution of pavement condition values throughout the entire network. And that pavement condition index value is broken into seven different categories, good being the best, or brand-new pavement, with then, of course, failed being the worst. And so, it's color-coded by the ASTM, green being good, and as we're working more towards red, is bad. So, this will kind of be displayed for the entire network on our next slide. So, a little difficult to see, but what you're seeing on the map is there's a lot of green in the town of Southwest Ranches, which I think is a tribute to the budgets that have been invested over the years to maintain this roadway network. By no means is it perfect. Like James said, pavements are deteriorating as soon as you put them down, so there is work still to be done. I think in our desktop review, it appeared 82% of the roadway network had been touched or rehabilitated in its life. So, as we're looking at the pavement condition index categories, the good and satisfactory are the green, but as we get to the yellow, orange, and red, that is where we're going to be looking to perhaps do some rehabilitation in the upcoming 10 years. And so, what we have done is, we've worked into, this program is developing unit costs so that we can provide the town an accurate estimate for how much rehabilitation is going to cost for these roads. What we've done is, we've taken bid tabs for recent construction projects that were done in the town of Southwest Ranches, compared those to state averages, and basically came up to a unit cost based on a square yard of pavement that's being touched. And then, we've marked that up to account for total construction costs, including mobilization and things such as that. A big thing to note here is, as you're seeing for the different construction types based on the PCI category, is it gets more expensive as the pavement gets worse, which logically makes sense. And so, what we've done in our analysis is, we've tried to capture roads in that fair-to-poor category, where it's a little cheaper to do that rehabilitation. Because as you can see, as it goes from that pink to red, you're looking at almost double the cost to touch that piece of pavement and repair it appropriately. Yeah, so as, to kind of reiterate, or kind of go off of what Nick is saying, is, we want to catch the pavements before it gets really expensive to repair them, right? So, it's a lot cheaper to keep good pavements good than it is to wait till they get to the end of their design life and they're completely deteriorated, to do some type of full-depth reconstruction or something of that nature. So, one of the other things of a pavement management program is, we like to take a look at budget scenarios. And basically, what that is, is a what-if, right? So, we've kind of taken a different, a look at different scenarios. As you can see here, some of these questions, if no funds were provided, different funding levels, if you had unlimited funds, in the perfect world, right? That's obviously not realistic, but we kind of provide that base value. Now, all this is, is we're trying to look at these different scenarios to see, if these were applied, what is the condition of your network going to be over 20 years? Is it going to continue to deteriorate? Is it going to maintain a flat level? Or is it going to continue to go up, depending on those different scenarios that we're running? So, we'll take a look at the next slide, we'll show you what that analysis looks like. So, these line graphs are basically, on the left-hand side, is the current condition of the network, right? So, that's 77, that satisfactory condition. Well, we took a look at these different scenarios over a 20-year period. That bottom line, that red line, that's if you had no funding, if you were not to put any money towards rehabilitating your road network. After 20 years, you can anticipate, obviously, that it's going to continue to deteriorate, but it's going to be around that 55 PCI condition number. Well, if you look just above that, about a half a million dollars a year, over that 20-year lifetime, you increase the network average just a little bit, but you're still deteriorating at the end of the day, over that 20-year period, it's still going to continue to deteriorate. And if you look at the group above, obviously, that's a million dollars more a year, but you're starting to maintain that condition, and then, as you go up, you're starting to maybe even increase the condition of the overall pavement network. So, that's what we're showing here, just want to run those different scenarios to kind of give an idea of, if we had this amount of money, if we applied these different scenarios, what is that going to do to the condition of our network over that 20-year period? And so, here, regardless of what you're going to do, I mean, depending, obviously, if you have unlimited funds, you're not going to have any backlog, but even if we run these scenarios, after that 20-year period, it's still likely that you're going to have some backlog built up after that. So, after that 20-year period, there still might be some pavements that might not have been touched, just depending on how much money you're putting towards it every year. So, see, I have pretty project amounts. So, after we do all this, we take a look at the condition, we take a look at the different types of work type, we put a cost to it, we run some scenarios. What we want to do is make sure that the projects that we're developing for your capital improvement program, they make sense, right? So, if you're looking at the top picture, it's kind of color scattered all over the place, but if we were to provide you that plan to do these different stretches of road in different years, the construction, the mobilization doesn't really make a lot of sense. So, what we want to do is group those projects in a logical sense around a certain budget so that they can be constructed in a certain area, right? Because if you're having a mobil, if you're sending a contractor all over the, all over the town, those mobilization costs are going to go up. So, we want to group those projects in a logical sense to go throughout that year. So, that's what we did. So, up top, you're seeing the different colors, and then, we grouped them into logical projects as you see throughout the process. So, these next couple of slides, we're going to show you what that 10-year plan is going to look like, and Nick's going to kind of provide a little more detail there. So, we'll have a table that actually details the exact numbers as far as mileage and ultimate budget for these projects, but what we've taken a look at is relating back to that PCI value, and also prioritizing east and west of 75. We've grouped projects by year, trying to target a budget somewhere in between what is currently in place and what that target budget would be to either meet or exceed the existing network PCI level. And so, for relating back to that PCI map, those pavements that we're looking in the yellow, orange, or red categories, we've included those in these initial 10 years. And then, in the 11- to 20-year plan, we're looking at perhaps some of those pavements that were in green, but we're anticipating those will deteriorate and then perhaps need resurfacing in this timeframe. So, ultimately, these projects will be captured in this table, and so, in addition to this presentation, we'll also have a report that we'll be submitting to the town. It captures the project plans, specifics for each project, as well as the methodology that we've presented here tonight. And so, in summary, this pavement management program was a study to provide a health check on the network here in the town of Southwest Ranches, make sure that the priorities for the upcoming budgets are being spent the most efficiently, and going to roads that need the maintenance most. Thank you for your time, we'll take any questions.
Thank you, appreciate the presentation. Counsel was fortunate enough to hear this presentation just a couple nights ago, so we kind of had a time to think of, kind of think through it a little bit. I know I've got a few questions, anybody else want to? All right, I'm going to jump in there. A few questions. So, on, not all the roads seem to be on the plan, and I'm curious, I know we talked about the other night that private roads were not. I don't know all the private roads and public roads off the top of my head, but I do know that I live on a public road and it's not in the plan. And so, I'm curious why that would be, like 195th Terrace is not in the plan.
Okay, I think I know the road you're talking about. And so, basically, for the scope that we developed at the onset of this project, we took the pavement management program that was developed several years ago by a different consultant, and in that, it detailed the right-of-way, and so, we used that as our basis for what was going to be public and private. And so, I think Rod reached out about 195th Terrace, and it was our understanding that that was as private, but it was included in the condition analysis just for the records of the town. That being said, all of the roads that we understood to be private, we did not include in the town's project packages, as it was our understanding the budget would not be spent towards those roads.
Rod, are you saying that's a private road?
Surprise.
I believe sections of 195th are private.
Sections are.
Sections of it.
There are sections where, but we have roads like that all over town.
Correct.
Are you telling every road that has a section of it that's private was excluded from this study?
No, 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 not all of them. I know, and we're going through the process now also of vetting what's on the maintenance maps, I know we discussed that at the drainage board, so we're going to make sure that we incorporate everything that's private in the maintenance maps, that we're assuming perpetual maintenance of, and obviously, all these other roads that do have checkerboard-type of right-of-ways on them as well. Everything will definitely be included.
So, I want to make sure I'm clear on this, because this is new information to me. I'm the mayor of the town, if it's new information to me, it's probably new information to everybody in town. So, I want to be clear. I thought we got past that point, where we recognized that these roads were maintained by the county and by the town for X near, number of years, and that we could go ahead and include them in the study and in the work. Is that what we're saying?
Yes, they definitely will be included. I think there's a couple areas where we'd have to double-check everything, just to make sure everything is included, but that's the target that we're definitely aiming for and trying to achieve, and we'll definitely include them at the end of the study.
Okay. If there are situations that are not included, that for whatever reasons, there's exceptions, I think we need to know that very quickly. Well, before, as part of this study, we need to know, really, we need to know which ones are not included in this, because we need to communicate with those residents so that there's no surprise. If they, if they need to take on some of the responsibility themselves, we need to let them know that sooner rather than later, rather than have their road deteriorate and they're just ignored and don't know about it.
Yeah, excuse me, are you referring to the roads that are strictly all private? Or are you talking about examples like 195th?
I'm talking about both.
Okay.
And what I'm saying is, if there is a section of town that we are not going to include in this, that are not going to be covered through this program, we need to identify those, which hopefully, we've already done, and we need, I say "I," I think the whole council needs a list of those, because we need to communicate. I'm going to be asking administration to communicate to those residents, to let them know that they're, that they're on their own here. I don't want there to be any surprises, I don't want to be 20 years down the line and the road is totally deteriorated, and so, we're up at that super-high cost to renovate, and that's when they realize that, oh, by the way, this is your problem, not ours. So, I want to make sure we communicate that very clearly as soon as we can to those residents.
Understood, yeah, and we'll coordinate with administration and definitely get that ball-rolling, but to the consultants, what they were saying before, we did target that baseline King study that was already done. That King study did not include all those private roads in it, and it was kind of my impression.
It did include 195th, which is one of the reasons why it surprised me that it was not included in this study.
Yes, and it should, and again, that's what we'll double-check, because the documentation that we submitted in the King should have included 195th in there, okay? So, we'll double-check all those roads to make sure everything is matching from what was there before to what is going to be at a minimum. The additions of the maintenance maps also will take place, we'll do that, and I know, I know the consultants looked at it, but we'll double-check to make sure everything's included.
Yeah, I would check 100%. I mean, obviously, I'm concerned about 195th.
Yes, yes.
That's where I live.
Yeah.
But I'm just as concerned for the other roads that might fall into that same category.
Yes, and rightfully so. And there was also a document that was created for residents that were on private roads, that if they wanted to be included in the Tisdore, they can sign up. So, I know there was.
Which is awesome.
Yeah, and I know those before I started, so I don't know the full detail of how that coordination and communication went about, but we'll coordinate with administration to make sure that that message is disseminated, for sure.
I really think that that's the optimal way to do it, is to make this available, obviously, for private roads, they would have their own responsibility and have to provide the funding for it, but if they can piggyback on what the rest of town is doing, I have to assume that would be at a lower cost than what they could do on their own.
Yes, absolutely, and we'll continue that same, that same process and ability to tie into the Tisdore program.
Excellent, thank you.
Just have to follow on to that.
Sure.
Do you guys have any idea or size, sorry, do you guys have any idea in terms of how much the cost is for what we've left out? Because, I mean, 195th is a mile long, it's a 20-foot-wide road, there's some connector roads in between, that could be a million-dollar project all by itself, given what we've done so far.
Now, when you say "left out" and "cost," are you saying as evaluating or including it in rehabilitation project?
Rehabilitation.
And so, for a rehabilitation project, we're unsure. Rod has been communicating with us today to make sure that we, in the next coming days and weeks, work through that, so we can take a look at those roads and just get a grasp of how much we're talking about.
Thank you.
Of course.
Steve, yeah, I'm a little bit confused, and let me tell you, let me tell you where. In past Tisdore projects, there has been a preliminary study of each road and each, all the sections, and that we did find pockets where there were, people had the, owned their own right-of-ways, and they signed them over to us, preliminary, before we started doing the payment, at no cost, they just, they didn't, they didn't even know they owned the road.
Right.
You know, that kind of thing. Are we not doing that anymore?
I would ask Rod that.
We are, we are doing that, councilmen. So, on 188th, when we did that section, there was a couple of lots at the very end, the southern end of 188th, that were private, but they basically brought up the road to, at the base, so we calculated a fee, did an evaluation of cost, and they sent us a check to go ahead and submit, they submitted a check for the value that we quantified, and they were included in the program. Those two lots were private, but they were included in the Tisdore project, so we're definitely doing that.
Yeah, but we've had instances where people didn't even know that they owned their side of the road or a portion of it, and it was just one small section, and they signed it over to the town to get it, to get it paved in past Tisdore projects. I recall, I don't recall the exact streets, but I remember we going through that exercise.
I remember as well, and I think, you know, like the example you gave at the end of that road, it was almost gravel, it was almost just a dirt road at that point.
Oh, right.
And so, yeah, they had to bring that up to a certain level before the town would take it. In other situations, you know, the road itself has, like I say, you know, it's been maintained, and so, you know, it's just, yeah.
Nobody knew it was private, you know.
Right, 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 right.
You know, and then, once the people realized that they've signed it, they did the right proper paperwork to the town.
Right, right.
You know, it was far and few between, but it did happen.
Yeah, 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 and there are, you know, that's, so, I don't know if we're, maybe we need to clarify exactly how are, how we're approaching that. What's the conditions under which we just accept it? Which conditions do we have to come up with a unique agreement about it?
Right. So, right now, the way that we approach it is, the road has to be up to a certain standard for us to take it over. So, if a resident comes to us and says, you know, let's say, my, the road is in disrepair in front of their house, and they don't, they've, let's say, they've either maintained it sparingly, or they haven't maintained it at all, so it's in really bad shape, we don't accept that road in that condition. So, what we'll do is, we'll make them bring it up to a standard where it's, again, I don't want to give it a PCI-type number, but where it's essentially resurfaced and it's in good condition, so for us to take over the perpetual maintenance of that. And we go through the same, we go through the sketch and legal process, it's a right-of-way dedication that's dedicated to us. I know the town attorney's office helps us with those documents and recording them and doing all that, so that's the process right now. We make sure, we do an evaluation of the pavement, if it gets, it needs to be restored to a certain condition, once it gets restored, we do the documentation, we prepare it, and when everything is done, we accept the perpetual maintenance of it.
All right, well, let me officially ask you to come out and look at my, look at my road, because I'm one of them guys. I own to the middle of the road. So, you know, this is, this is new information to me, I thought it was just going to be maintained and go, so let's, let's, you know, I guess, and, you know, me and my neighbors, we need to figure this out.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, we'll check it out, and we'll go out there and do an evaluation, for sure.
All right, good.
I have another question.
Yeah, sure.
Are we following the same, are we going to be following the same schedule that we came up with in the, in the beginning?
The King study.
In the King study, yeah, where these roads were done in a particular order? Or is that now all been scrambled?
Are you talking about the annual schedule, or just the order in the roads in which they get done?
The order.
The order is, I know the consultant prepared a different order, but it's, we can choose however we want to do it. I know the King study was vetted, that schedule was, I think, approved by council, so they're just giving us a different opinion on certain ratings based on what the PCIs are, but we can 100% keep the original schedule, and that's, right now, our intent.
Yeah, because we were doing one on the east side, one on the west side, one on the east, back and forth, so nobody.
Right.
But we also did that based on the quality of the roads. I mean, we tried to do the worst quality first.
Yeah, there were other factors.
Right. Has this study shown that any of that has changed, I guess? Because maybe the prioritization is different, and the groupings are going to be different because of the amount of money you're intending on us budgeting.
Certainly, and things have changed since the King study. I think that began in 2013, or perhaps concluded in 2013. So, at that time, you're estimating or forecasting how those pavements are going to deteriorate, which, any engineer, it's your best guess, given historical data that you have in front of you. And so, I think it's, it was wise of the town to update this 10 years later, and now we're taking a look at it, and we have seen that priorities have changed. Some roads, they perhaps haven't received an increase in traffic while others have. So, given that, the condition certainly has changed. So, as far as a condition, priorities have changed, the priorities of the town, I can't speak to necessarily, but regarding the King's proposed plan moving forward for the next 10 years, we have seen differences, and we're discussing those with Rod.
Yeah, I think, that's a great point. So, I think that, you know, from my perspective, and I welcome other thoughts to it, for sure, but I think those, those projects that are already underway, I mean, obviously, we would not want to in any way change course on those, but I would like to see what the difference in priorities would be over what, you know, our established plan versus what the new, you know, road conditions might lead us to do. Keeping in mind that we are kind of alternating back and forth, we want to maintain that, make sure folks all over town are seeing progress, but I guess I'd like to see what the proposal would look like and what the variations would look like before just flat-out going one way or the other.
I'll work with Nick and with James, and we'll get something to you guys, so you can see side-by-side how it stacks up.
Great, great.
Rod, real quick, if you would, the streets that are totally private, we just did one there in Green Meadows, will they be notified ahead of time that Tisdore's coming through, and if they want to jump onboard, what it would cost each individual person to do? Once that's done, if they jumped on and got the, would they get the same cost as the town was paying, or would it be higher? And if they did, would that street then be a lot easier to turn over to the town?
So, to answer one at a time, yes. As we go through and do the Tisdore, as we see our road groupings, if we see adjacent roadways that are there, that are private, we will go ahead and notify the owners, and this is, I know we've done that on the sidewalk, we did Melaleuca, and we did Appaloosa, we went ahead and made that communication to residents there on one of the streets. So, we will do that. Now, they have to bring it up to a certain standard, from the standpoint of establishing, we'll establish a certain cost, we'll take dimensions, with the unit cost and the dimensions, we'll develop a cost of it, and then, from there, they will hand over monies to us, and then, they'll be incorporated into the plan if they choose to do so. And then, at that point, yeah, once the whole roadway's resurfaced, being incorporated into, you know, the right-of-way dedication and us taking over the road is going to be a lot and us taking over the road is going to be a lot simpler.
Okay, so it'd be a lot simpler than the street that they're currently trying to do now then?
Well, I say a lot simpler, but there'll be surface drainage included with the resurfacing, so a lot of those issues go away.
Right.
I have some questions related to the, the money side, the funding side, so the different scenarios, obviously, the no funding, so the no funding, the number there, that's 76.7 million, that is what we would project it would take to fix it at the end of 20 years if we did nothing, is that what that number means?
So what that's, excuse me, what's that showing is, over the 20 years, as those projects are not getting done, it's going to build up a backlog, what we call a backlog.
Yep.
And so it's not a present value, it's nothing of that sense, it's, if you didn't do this project, it's going to carry over, that money's going to carry over, and then at the end of the 20 years, if you haven't done any projects, that's $76 million, or that, I'm not sure what the number is.
76.7.
76.7 million dollars, at the end, if you don't touch any, that's how much backlog of pavement that you would have to touch.
Have to, so if we were then to do.
Rehabilitation.
Okay, so if we were then to, like, fix it all in one year, that would be what we're projecting, I know it's a very, it's 20 years out, we don't know, I'm not going to hold you to the number, but I just want to understand kind of what it means, that's what it would take at that point, because the roads had deteriorated so much further, it would cost so much more to bring them up to speed again.
And it also includes some inflation as well over those 20 years, and again, we don't know what, we don't have the crystal ball of what that's going to look like, but it's a planning level number of what that might look like.
Great.
Mayor?
Yes?
May I speak to the funding aspect of it?
Sure.
As you know, we've had some success in the past, we did a couple of TIS door projects that were funded through the Surtax before the county eliminated the rehabilitation and maintenance eligibility projects.
Yeah.
I've mentioned to you all in the past, the Managers Association is working with the county on the third amendment to that Surtax ILA, and I heard just last week, R&amp;M, our request, Managers Association, R&amp;M projects, because it's not just here, that's everywhere, is 35% of that Surtax funding, the other roughly two-thirds are new projects and, and community transit, municipal bus systems, so I don't know what the timing is on that, but I'm, I'm very optimistic that that, that window is going to open up again for these types of projects in the future, which will be very helpful to us.
Yeah, that's great news, that's great news.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
On page 15, we have recommended projects and budgets, which basically outlines the map, the spaghetti map that we saw, both of them are incomplete, like this is the total, like your, your street's gone.
Right, I agree.
This should be updated to really reflect what, what we're talking about, yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I'm looking here at 30, 40 million dollars, whatever it is, at the end of the day, the total, but that's inaccurate, and it's, it's probably off by half or something.
Yeah, that's what, and I think, Bob, that's what you were kind of alluding to earlier as well, is, I, the numbers, until, until we get the full listing of all the roads listed here, we won't know really what that cost is that we're talking about.
The full cost, and so the, we'll work with Rod as far as this plan, it was targeting a certain budget around a million, like you were saying, anywhere from a half a million to kind of that $2 million range, and so if you saw that one graph, as far as the line graph, if we were to target 1.8 to 2 million every single year, then we would be able to eliminate the backlog, right, and so.
Yeah, no, no, I get that, but what I think what we're talking about is, is that there's roads here that are not included, that would have added on to that amount, it's not, it's not a backlog, it's, it's an exclusion.
And I think that's what we were talking about earlier, we'll work with Rod to make sure that any of those roads that were maybe on the edge, was it private or not private, we'll make sure that we're going to include, if they need to be maintained, or they are maintained by the town, that we will include those in that project plan, which may change that number at the end of the day.
Okay, all right, so going back to the slide where it talks about the different.
Slide number?
11. So, I understand no funding, let's drop down to the next one, the half a million, so basically, that's if we continue to go, for those that are out there that may or may not realize, basically now we have a half a million dollars a year budgeted for the projects, and, and we have learned that that's not enough money, that, you know, but we've been able to, through grants, and as, as Andy was just talking about, we've been able to supplement that to kind of get, get a little bit more done for it, but I think this lays out a great example that, at the end of the day, if we continue on the path we're going, that it's going to become very costly in the long run, and that's what this is pointing out, right?
Right, and that, and that's exactly what it's pointing out, and as we talked about, as, as those payments are getting to that condition that are a lot cheaper to fix.
Yeah.
If we don't have the money to fix them, then they're going to continue to deteriorate and become ultimately more expensive to fix down the road, and so it's just going to continue to build.
Gotcha, perfect, okay, so then, the next one down is maintain conditions at PCI equals 77, why don't you talk us through that Y 77, and because there's still a backlog in there, what does that mean?
Absolutely, so the maintain conditions is, taking a look at your current network overall, PCI is at a 77, so if we were to look at and say, we are, as a town, we are happy with where our payments are currently in the network at an average of 77, or weighted average of 77, okay, so if everybody's, if we're all happy with that, what is it going to take over a 20-year period to maintain that network condition at that 77, so if we put this amount of money towards, it won't drop, it's not going to go up, it's going to just stay at that baseline where we're at today.
Okay, and, and why is there a backlog for that one?
Because at the end of the day, the maintain, it's still not enough at the end of the 20 years to complete every project that needs to be done, you're creating a lot, or you're doing a lot of projects, and you're creating, changing a lot of those payments that are in that fair or poor or worse condition and putting them back to the good, but over the 20 years, some of those payments are still going to get into that repair situation that we weren't able to address with the, that budget at 1.5 million dollars is what it ends up being.
So perhaps, go ahead.
Sorry, if I can just add, the way I like to think about this scenario specifically in the, the software that we use to calculate it, it's basically how much is it going to cost to fight deterioration, so we're able to model based on the age and condition data that we have in our software, where it currently stands, but then, over time, as that deteriorates and it's fighting inflation as well as material costs, how much budget are we looking at in 20 years, just to provide further context.
Great.
So, can I just follow along with that, because I'm still not clear, so if we spend the 30 million in the middle example, we'll end up with a backlog of 13 million of accumulated deterioration during that 20 years? Okay.
And it's either projects that were not able to be touched within that 20 years?
Because of what, though, why would we, we're supposed to try to plan everything, right, and budget so that we get it all done in 20 years, so.
Right, and all this is, is one of those scenarios to kind of what if, to kind of provide that baseline of the different, if we were to do this, where are we going to end up, if we were going to do this, where it is going to end up, it's kind of just that snapshot comparison of where we're at as a, as a town and where we're going to go in the future, and so the maintain, as you're saying, is we're fighting deterioration, inflation, at the end of the day, at the end of the 20 years, there's still going to be some projects that we need to do.
So why wouldn't we figure, in this case, I guess it's what, 43 million over time? I don't know if my glasses is on.
Yeah.
Yeah, roughly, why wouldn't we just figure that upfront for the duration of the 20 years and try to get all the work done?
And so that's that next one down?
Yeah, that's the next one. But before we get to that one, I don't want to, so, I just want to understand this one, so the 13.2 million that is still out there, are we saying that those roads are below 70, 77 PCI, or are we saying, so we're not really maintaining, it's an average, is that we're saying, our roads average, it's, I'm trying to understand.
And I understand, and see if I can try to explain, so the maintain conditions is, we say at year one, so let's say 2020, let's call it year one, 2023, at year one, we're going to apply this, we're going to do these many projects, and it's going to tackle the projects that are currently below that 77 or reconstruction based on priority and budget.
Right.
Next year, we're going to tackle these projects, well, we've still got some projects maybe that haven't been able to be tackled, haven't been able to been addressed yet, but next year, they're going to continue to deteriorate and then ultimately build up that cost over that 20-year period, is that?
Okay, so at the end of the 20-year period, there will be roads that don't meet that 77 criteria?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
So then, does the 13 million just represent the next program that would come after the first 20 years?
I think, I think, if, I'm, I'm not, I just want to make sure I understand, that's why I'm saying it, not that, I don't, I certainly don't know better than you all, but I, if I say it myself and you nod, then I feel like I understand, so if I'm understanding what you're saying is, at the end of the 20-year period, we could then, if we chose to do so, not that we would, we could then choose to do a 13.2 million dollar project and bring those roads up to, is that?
Yes, but again, 20 years, inflation, you know, the crystal ball of what those projects are going to cost, and the material is going to cost at that point, that number might change, right, so this is kind of that planning level that, we're looking at it now, trying to predict in 20 years what it's going to be, the software and the prioritization is doing its best, but again, we only have the knowledge, it's a planning level number, is what I would say.
Yeah, I think all those red boxes are basically what we would, if at the end of 20 years.
Liability.
Liability, that's the best way to look at it, liability, all right, so let's talk about, if everybody's ready to move on to the next one, next, go ahead, David, you've got a question.
Are we still talking about the road issues?
Yeah, no, I've still got two more, two more scenarios to go.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, I'll wait till, I'll wait till the end, it's fine.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question on this whole chart, and maybe, it's probably me, the one we just talked about with a, with a 13 million dollar backlog, but, and if we fund 30, 30 and a half million, then we have a 13 million dollar backlog, but unlimited, we'd have 31,900, there's not a whole lot of difference between 30, 500 and 31.
That's what I'm looking at.
And I'm scratching my head on that going, why would we choose any of, you know, any of the first?
You're going where I'm going.
Yeah, I, okay, I don't get it, I'm missing something here.
So that's why I want to make sure I understand all these things, because after I got home and I started looking at this, I was like, wait a minute, wait a minute, there may be, there may be a different strategy here, so.
Yeah, something.
So walk us through the next one, what is that, clear the backlog?
Okay, so the clear the backlog scenario is, if we said, in this scenario, what we did is that in 20 years, we don't want to have any payments that are not meeting the condition or have not been touched, right, so we haven't, they haven't gone, they haven't failed, we've all, we've taken all of our payments and repaired them to the condition of 100 at the end of 20 years, that is what this budget number is.
To the condition of, now, they're never going to be all at 100.
Correct.
So what is it, so tell me that again.
At some point, so what clear backlog is doing, it's running an analysis, and it runs different iterations of, we want to try to prioritize your payments as they are getting into that fair condition, that area that's a lot cheaper to repair, then we're going to repair those and bring them back to 100 PCI or brand-new pavement.
So are we saying that, going back to the chart on page eight, that every, at the end of the 20 years, every property would be in the satisfactory or good?
That's correct.
Every road would be in the satisfactory or good category?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, all right, I think I got that one, all right, then, let's finish it off with the unlimited.
All right, so unlimited is, excuse me, unlimited is, if we had all the money in the world, we won the lottery, we have as much money as we need to address every single project today, then it would be 31.9 million dollars to address all those projects currently at, in, in year one.
And, but, my, my question with that is, okay, in year one, we do that, 20 years later, we've got a huge liability, they're all 20 years old.
So if I can actually clarify, what we're missing here is the time factor, so it's, it's not just year one, it's year one, at the start of year one, January 1, 2023, as well as then the next year, so what is, what has crossed that threshold and now is requiring, so what is, what went from satisfactory to fair in year two, because it didn't get addressed in year one, because we didn't pave the entire town, we paved anything that was in that fair or less, so that fair is what we're targeting as a critical PCI value, and once it crosses that threshold, then we're saying it needs to be resurfaced, because if something isn't necessarily requiring a resurfacing, we're not going to put the budget towards that, so what this is doing at the year, at the start of each year, it's applying budget to any projects that cross that threshold, so year one is going to have the highest, because as you saw on the map, there's several stretches of road that are in that fair or worse category, and then, once those are addressed, it's going to be fewer and fewer each year, so if we were to plot basically the budget for each year over the 20 years, it'd be a very large purse at the start of it, with then smaller to follow.
Gotcha, so my last, I'm not going to say my last question, but, we're getting close anyway, so if we go back one page to page 10, the graph, so on page 10, so this is, this is really just graphing the PCI, so it's not really graphing the money, okay, so I guess, I guess what I'd like to see, Emile, looking to you now, is I would love to see a graph, understanding the, we'd have to have a list of assumptions associated with it, but I would love to see a graph for what the flow of money would be to accomplish what maintaining the PCI is in this graph, so what I'm, I mean, what I'm anticipating is that there would be a very high funding level the first couple of years, and where I'm going with this, not that I'm proposing it by any stretch of the imagination, because sitting here before you, I don't know what I'm talking about, I'm just learning, that's why I'm asking all these questions, so, but I am wondering if it makes sense based on the observations we're making, similar to what Gary presented a few minutes ago, what I, you know, kind of was looking at this, you know, and is perhaps, perhaps, I'm not proposing, I have to be very careful, because you say something up here, I heard you said this is what we're going to do, no, that's not what I'm saying, I'm not saying we're going to do this, but I'm wondering if some sort of a bond to generate a large amount of income to get us, or revenue to get us to the roads to where it should be upfront, to get rid of the really expensive repairs, that we would then be in a much better place, as this graph shows, we would overall spend less money over time, recognizing that we might lose out on some of our grants, because now we're funding a lot of the, the really rough ones ourselves upfront, so that's, that's, that's a negative towards doing that, I get that, and so this is going to be a pretty complex financial view with a lot of assumptions that I think we need ultimately to be clear about, but I would love to see that, I don't know what you all are, I'm going to be quiet for a little bit.
So just assumptions, to complete the work over five years or over 20 years?
Over 20 years, over 20 years, but what's, what we're saying is that, correct me if I go astray, what we're saying is that we've got a number of roads that need a lot of work, right, and as we prioritize those and work on those other roads, as is shown by the graph on chart on page 10, overall, the roads are deteriorating faster than we are repairing them, so what that means is that we are slowing down this liability that's growing, but the liability, in spite of the fact that we're spending a half a million dollars a year on this every year, in fact, we're kind of kidding ourselves if we think we're getting ahead of the game, we're actually still falling behind, so, so to get to one of those top three scenarios there, which puts us ahead of the game, and on the next page, charts show that over the long run, is actually going to save the town a lot of money, how do we get there, if that's, and so that's why I look at Emile to say, how do we, what, what's the dollars that would get us there, and what's the tools that would get us there, and when I talk about assumptions, obviously, we're talking about interest rates that we have no idea what it is, we have deterioration of the road, which we have no idea how it is, we have inflation rates, we have no idea, so every one of those things is going to be an assumption that gets plugged into there, that we'll need to, you know, kind of vet out and see whether, whether we agree or not.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, that's possible, all we need to know is the amount that it would take for the town to make the repairs, and then we do an analysis on a construction bond, which would require to. which will require to get input from, from the citizens in order to be approved, if we ever get to that.
If, yeah, if we ever got to that point.
But it's, it's absolutely possible to, to, to create a scenario if we do know the amount, based on the last number, the unlimited, it's just basically clearing out, if that number is what we would take the town for the first two, three years to complete all the projects. Then we take the assumption of, of the interest, the cost, whatever is associated to the issuing of the bond, and then we present that to council.
Why wouldn't we want to do this on a much shorter timeframe than 20 years? I mean, if we're going to float a bond, and it's for, let's just take the $6 million, the clear the backlog scenario, and we've got everything done in five years.
I think, I think the, the issue with that, two, two thoughts come to mind. And, once again, you guys correct me if I go astray. One thought is, and, and actually, they're both tied together. The life of a road is 20 years.
Right.
So if we repair them all right now, then they're all going to deteriorate together.
Heard you say that, sure.
It's kind of like, you know, the IT, you know, the PC, you don't, you don't really want to replace them all at once, you want it to go on. So, so I think it makes sense to do it over a 20-year life, because once we get them all up to speed, and we're handling them as they move from satisfactory to the next level down, those will be minimal costs. And maybe we can even get back, I don't know, I shouldn't even say it, but we'll get, maybe get back down to a much more, I would expect us to get down to a much more reasonable level, once, you know, that initial cost was paid off.
Well, here's what I'm wondering about, and I'm not a bond guy, I've never floated a bond, personally.
I haven't.
But, you know, if we're going to be doing this over 20 years, are we going to be floating a bond every two or three years?
No, 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 no.
You float a bond once for 20 years?
Once, to get us, to get all the roads up to that satisfactory and good condition. That's the only time we do the bond.
But it's going to take us several years to get that work done, right? It's not going to be in the first year.
You do one bond, you, that's what I'm saying, you have to do the financial analysis to determine what that bond amount is going to be.
Right.
And then you do that bond, so that, you, it's a one-time deal, and you get all the roads.
But do you take tranches every year of the money to pay down the work we're getting done?
We don't do it over 20 years, we do it over, how many years? What is it? Quickly, yeah, yeah.
Oh, so you pay it off on five years, instead of 20?
Well, I would, the life, the life of the asset is 20 years, so basically, you would want to pay it off over 20 years. Okay? Even if, even if the project is done sooner, you know, just like, you know, you build a house, the project is done sooner, but you have a 30-year mortgage on it. So this would be the same idea, you get the roads done much sooner, but to make it more palatable on the town, you would pay it off over a longer period of time. Probably, and you don't want to exceed the life of the asset, otherwise you're getting to issues, you know? So you, you, 20 years, I think, would be the appropriate time to do it over. But at the end of the 20 years, we would have all our roads still in either good or satisfactory condition, so we wouldn't need to do another bond. We could just continue the maintenance program that we started after the initial, everything was brought up to speed.
So I don't remember enough about bonds from grad school. And I've never floated one. If we're borrowing, say, $36 million upfront, aren't the interest payments on this going to be massive for money we're not going to use for 18, 19, 20 years out?
No, 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 because this, this money is only designed to bring us up to speed. We're still going to be having, I'm just going to make up a number, we're still going to be spending the half a million dollars, normal TIS-DOR money, for our maintenance year after year, after, let's just say, I have no idea whether this is right. Let's say we do the bond, we get this huge amount of money in, and it takes us three years to get all the roads up to speed.
So we're still going to accelerate rehabilitation of the road?
Absolutely, because we've got to, we've, we've got to get everything, so everything that is already in satisfactory or good condition, all the, all the bright green ones there, we're not spending any of the bond money on that.
Right.
But anything that's yellow, or red, or purple, or any of those, that's where the bond money goes, to get them green.
It'll get everything up to a 77.
Right. And then, in the years after that, those roads that are green now will slowly turn. And so that's what our annual.
Now it makes sense.
TIS-DOR would.
I was thinking we're going to do the construction over 20 years, which means we're going to pay a massive amount on that interest upfront.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good enough, thank you.
Yeah.
David?
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Go ahead.
Earlier, I heard some discussions regarding private roads. And I understand that you go through the town, some roads, not very highly traveled, they're perceived to be private roads. At one of the last, not the last Sunshine Ranches party in the park, but the one before that, I was approached by a couple of residents that live on, it's called Hunter Lane. And that is off of 55th Street at Hollity. And Russell, can you bring that up, please? Now, this, this road is not a highly traveled road, but I took a drive down it after they complained about it, and it is really, really bad. It is worse than Hollity even was, it couldn't even compare, because of the potholes. Now, we sent out, the town was great, town was done great, they, they went and patched up the holes, and it was, I guess, a, a patch job is what was done, to accommodate. And the neighbors were happy, but the road is still in bad shape. I don't see it anywhere on here, and I'm just wondering if, if they were aware that this was a town road and not a private road? Because it is in, in really bad shape, and I know Rod is well aware of this road, and I, and I really applaud Rod for being on top of this.
I'm confused, it's a private road?
No.
Or it's a town road?
It's a town road.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, Councilman, so, what we did was, there was a, a pretty large section, which we ended up preparing, because it was in really, a, a really state of disrepair. And it is, it is a town road. So what I'm thinking is, there, there could be some issue in the file transfers when we sent our consultant the information for TIS-DOR. I think maybe that's where some of this stuff is, I also want everybody to be aware, too. The reason we're having these meetings and presentations is that the document's not done. So we're still, we're still working through some things, it's not finalized. So we wanted to present to you, show you exactly what the methodology was, what our train of thought was, how they were going and approaching, you know, their assessment and the pavement management. So it, it's definitely going to, there's still room to, to change things and finish it up.
Awesome. Yeah, no, I think this is fant, I mean, I'm, you know, we're all pointing out things we see. Please don't take it as criticism of the work, we're just, it's, this is, this is a big project for our town, it affects all our residents, we want to make sure we understand it, so we can explain it, and that we, you know, do it the right way.
We'll be asked these questions.
And it was done well.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is actually, this is awesome.
Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Got a question, I'm a little hazy here on the, on the whole bond issue. We take out a bond for 20 years. We get all the work done, but we're paying for it over 20 years, the interest is still there. We're not, we may get the roads done in three years, but we're still, to your point, we're still paying massive interest over it.
We're, yeah.
Over a 20-year period.
It's like a mortgage.
Yeah, it's, 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 so, we're, I don't, I don't know if that's the right financial move.
I don't, let me say again, let me say again, I did not come in here to propose, I did not come in here to propose that we're doing a bond. I am not leading the charge to do a bond.
Okay.
I, what I want to do is, I want to explain, I want, I want that to be, you know, explored.
Considered.
And considered, you know?
All options, really, not just that one.
You know?
Yeah, I, I, I'm just was hazy on that whole.
Yeah.
Get it done in three years, but the life of the bond's 20 years, so we're still going to.
It's just like a mortgage on your house.
Yeah.
Just like a mortgage on your house.
Whether we do it in three years, or we do it in 10 or 15 years, we're still going to have the same payments.
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's like, it's, I, I wouldn't say we have the same payments, it's, it's like, it's like a mortgage, right? You can get a 15-year mortgage or a 30-year mortgage. You know, you get a 15-year mortgage, you know, your payments are going to be bigger, but your interest that you pay over the life of it is going to be a lot less.
Right.
So this would be the same sort of a situation, you know? Yeah, Rod?
Sorry, if I could also add, I think what we will do in the, in the revision, when we go through this again and, and look at it, I think maybe instead of doing unlimited amount, we'll just calculate exactly what that amount is to get to that point where we can do it for 31,9, right?
Yeah.
That way, we have kind of a concrete idea of what the upper limit, because what, what these gentlemen were essentially trying to do is just, just highlight the different tiers of funding that we put into it and where it gets us, essentially, right? So if, if we don't do any funding at all, our PCI averages drop to, I think, 55 or in the 50s, and the total reclamation at that point is 76 million. Whereas if we have unlimited, we do it, like you're saying, either through a bond or some instant cash, then it, you know, the, the present cost is only 32 million. And they were just showing the different tiers between if we put half a million, 1 million, 1.6, 1.8 or whatnot, then that's where our, our fluctuation is. We'll put a cap on the unlimited number, instead of saying unlimited, we'll, we'll have like a, you know, 2.1, we'll, we'll try to calculate that, so we have a definitive range.
Okay. And, and, and the reason, just to follow up on Gary, with your point, great point, the reason why I'm asking Emile to take a look at it is because this is the cost to fix the road. This does not include the finance cost, which is what I'm asking Emile to get to us, so that we can see, I, I'm, I'm just making numbers up, I don't expect it would turn out this way. But if, you know, interest rates, let's just say interest rates went up to 20%, then you know what? Then, then all of a sudden, the unlimited, that 31 million could turn into 40, 50, 60 million, and all of a sudden, it becomes a really bad idea.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's.
That number's going to go up regardless, because not all the roads are in the study.
Yes, it is.
Right.
It is. Well, it's going to go up regardless, because, yeah, you're right, there's not all the roads are in there, and there's zero interest in there, so.
And we don't know what that's going to be.
That's correct.
It could be another 10 million.
It could be.
You know, I, and I bet I'm pretty close.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm.
We're, we're missing like your, your road.
Yep.
And, and other roads we're missing all throughout there. I forgot what the, the exact number is, but I know we had 61.8 or 61.2 miles of private road, and it was like three times that of public road.
Yeah.
And, I don't think that's in here.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
I, I.
Pointing out all the, all the.
No, it's, it's a, it's an awesome point, it's an absolute, it's a great point. And, and that's, you know, that's what's good about this, is that we're having the opportunity to walk through it now, so that when we get it, we'll, I think we'll feel good about that we have accurate numbers here. I'm hoping that we also have accurate numbers on projections from a financial cost, the finance cost to do it, so that we can really look at this holistically, what each one of these options is really going to cost us at the end of 20 years, including not only, you know, the, the work out on the road, and the engineering, but also in the bank and financing and interest, and make sure that we make the right choice. This is, this is, this is, this is the single largest project that we do in town. We've got to do it right, so. One, one last, well, I've got one more point to make, but it's, it's more of a fun point than, than a. One of, one of the most interesting roads to look at in this study, to me, was Mathers. And the reason why is, if you look at Mathers, on the, on the southern part, it's green. In the middle part, it's yellow. And up near Griffin Road, it's orange. So it gives you a great, a great view as to how, you know, what you talk about in the study here, the different types of traffic and, and how it impacts the road. And that portion of the road that's right up near Griffin, that takes everybody's traffic, needs work. You know, the, the part down right near Sheridan, it's in great shape.
The part where I live.
Yeah, yeah, you're enjoying a good road. So, you know, but it, it really, and it's, it's a snapshot of, of what you guys are talking about, so.
All right, anything else from the council before I open it up to the public? Great job, guys, really appreciate it. Yeah, Noel?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Number one, I'm not in favor of a bond ever, so anyway, that's my thought. Number two, taking a look at the recommended projects and budgets, when they're talking about, you were talking about Mather, North Mather Boulevard Rehabilitation, and then South Mather Boulevard Rehabilitation, is that going driving north? Or is there two sections of the Boulevard? That they're talking about a north section, or, and a south section?
I assume.
Because they're different mileages. And it's also the same thing with 172nd Rehabilitation, North and South. You've got two different mileages. And I'm like, if it's one road, how can it be two different mileages? And especially since it's between Griffin and Sterling, I mean, Sheridan. And I don't, you know, what's the difference in that, difference in mileage? So either it's, you're splitting the road up into sections, as you were talking about, south, middle and north, or it's, someone can't count mileage. That's, that was my question.
Thank you, Noel. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none. Can, can you guys address that?
Yes, of course, thank you for the question, sir. Those are referring to the geographical location on the road. We had to make some sort of assumptions to shorten the description of these projects, but that would be the north end, not the northbound or southbound. Similar to the east and west, it would be geographically not the direction of travel.
If I heard what you said the other night, I don't think you mentioned it tonight, but I think you did mention it the other night, that all these are based on centerline measurements of the road?
Centerline miles, yes.
Here's an interesting, fun fact.
Yeah.
If one, fun fact, the south end of Mather has a lower PCI than the north end of Mather. 51 to 48.
And Councilman, that would be at the year of that project. That's another thing that we could probably add to this chart to clarify. So it's deteriorating between those years.
The lower the number is, the poorer the condition of the road. The south end gets less traffic than the north end, you know? Because it's a one-way-in, one-way-out type dead end.
Right.
I just thought that was fun, funny.
Hmm, yep. Interesting, all right. Anything else?
I think we beat this one to death.
Yeah, I think we've done it, I think we've done it. We see, this is what always happens, you guys came on a meeting where we had a light agenda, so we spent serious, I'm on it.
Hey, like you said, it's a very important project, we want to make sure that we're, we're doing right by the town and including everything that needs to be, so that it's, it's, it's right moving forward.
Perfect, appreciate it very much, thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And thank you, Rod, I know, appreciate your work on this. All right, public comment, any public comment tonight? We have any, no cards, all right? No public comment, any board reports tonight?
Nope. All right, any, yeah, there we go, I knew, I knew. Hey, we've got flamingos out there, I was waiting for the flamingo report.
You got a barn, dance. For the Ed Board, yes. So, in case anyone, we, we've had lots of pink flamingo sightings all around town. They're from Sunshine Ranches, Midtown, Country States, Rolling Oaks. So if you happen to see them, they're, they're friendly little guys. So, and if you're, if you'd like to pass them along to someone, and they haven't made it to your home yet, you can feel free to call Town Hall and speak to Deborah, and we'll get them sent out. The barn dance is coming up, it's sold out, though. But we, if, we are still looking for donations for the, the silent auctions. So if anyone has any contacts or like trips, or vacation packages, or anything like that, you can call Town Hall as well, and that would be greatly appreciated. And, if you have anything else? And I'll just, and the barn dance, the Outback Steakhouse, they're donating all the food for it. So great thanks to them in supporting the town scholarship.
Deborah, real quick, Deborah? If there's room outside for a couple more tables, would that be something that Kathy would consider? If, to put two tables outside for, it was mentioned the other night, but that there may be still some seats open, but you'd have to put the tables outside?
I, I don't know that I can speak to that, but I'll.
Okay.
You're treading on dangerous.
I know, all right, great, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Debbie. All right, seeing other, no other board reports, council member comments?
I'll go.
All right, awesome.
All right, just to be really quick, in the interest of time, just to mention a few things coming up. We have, on the 1st of April, April Fool's Day, we have the 5K at the barn. Hopefully, everybody in this room signed up. Even if you're don't-walking, just sign up anyway. We could use the money for the scholarship fund. The 11th is the barn dance, and as I understand, there's still one open table, but. but you'd have to call the front desk on that one to find out. April twenty-ninth is our next hazmat at the barn, so it's a great service, has shredding, prescription drug drop-off, and it'd get rid of all your old batteries or paints and stuff like that. As Debbie mentioned, Ms. Green mentioned, flamingo flocking is occurring, and the migration season is on, so for the next couple of months. Those of you that went to the Fun Horse Show, it was fun.
It was fun.
It was enjoyable. I was there for about an hour or so in the morning, and it started out really, really good. I think we had about thirty riders there, thirty's thirty-plus, and it was, it was a lot of fun to watch, watch the kids do that. And just to make mention, I don't know if this is premature or not, but we had a discussion item on item number thirteen with the Phil. We're not gonna be discussing that tonight. We're gonna pull that in the interest of the Drainage Committee once more time with the subject, so we'll probably schedule that for a later date. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Gary. I feel like I'll go next.
Short list tonight. So last Saturday, we took a group of residents over to the Waste Management Recycling Facility, and everybody walked in the door saying, wow, look at the giant piles of garbage, because that's what recycling looks like when they dump it off. And it's a pretty impressive tour through the facility as they show you how they separate all the materials. So everybody who went had a great time. Of course, I'm always soliciting feedback on the quality of service from Waste Management. Nobody had a bad word to say. Nobody's missed a trash pickup. Nobody's missed a bulk pickup. So right off the bat, I was very pleased with that whole thing. I don't know. Russell, do you, or Randy, do you guys get many complaints at Town Hall about trash? Or has that gone away now?
The, yeah, we get very few and far between. Now, it happens occasionally. We may get one call in a couple, you know, one or two a week, but nothing like when it first started.
Yeah, that's not what it was. Good, good, good. So just to put it out there one more time, we have another trip planned on a weekday this time, on March the ninth at ten AM. And if you're, we've got people signed up already, but if you'd like to join us, just send me an email or give me a call on my cellphone at nine-five-four-eight-zero-one-seventeen-fifty-eight, and I'll certainly sign you up and send you out the documentation. I did wanna talk about an incident that happened on Sunday that we need to address with Davy P.D. It's one of those random things, but we should be prepared. At about four o'clock in the afternoon on Sunday, I got a, I think everybody probably got stuff from one of our residents on what was going on. It was roughly three hundred ATVs came down Dykes Road from Sheridan to Griffin. You know, I watch on patrol every Friday night, and you see the way the police are prepared for the things that they expect. I don't know if anybody out here is prepared, because this is the first time this has happened to us where hundreds of them show up. It's been happening in Dade County for a couple of years now. It generally happens on MLK Day. Well, this was the day before President's Day, so let's go celebrate by breaking the law. I'd really, and I've spoken to Andy about this, we really need to get the chief involved in this because if somebody calls it in when they're getting off on Sheridan Street and Davy hears about it, stop sticks will stop him pretty quickly. You know, we need to be able to catch these guys to show them that we're not a pushover community. You know, the person I talked to thought that, you know, they look at us as an easy mark because they can escape on either seventy-five or twenty-seven. I don't wanna be known as anybody's easy mark. You know, we, I think we need to prepare, so I've asked Andy to start working with the chief to, to look into some potential actions to tell. It would benefit Davy as well, because it's only a matter of time before they get nailed.
Do you wanna talk a little bit more about what they actually did? I mean, there was a stream of them, which is, which is fine.
Yeah.
You can have your motorcycles go through, no big deal, but this was more than that.
Yeah, I don't know all the details, to be honest. Maybe Andy can fill in what I don't know, but I do know that they arrested one guy. They found firearms. The guy's a convicted felon, and he had a firearm, so he's probably still in jail. So I don't know if you guys have more detail than that. I didn't go into a lot of the detail.
Yeah, I mean, basically, they go and take over an intersection.
Oh, sure. A whole road?
Yeah, yeah. And so all traffic stops in all directions, and they just kinda take it over, and they stay there as long as they can stay there. And as soon as policing shows up, they scatter, as you mentioned, in all directions. And, and so it's, it creates an issue.
Yeah, they closed down Biscayne Boulevard a couple of times, a number of main roads down south. I thought you were referring to the person who got arrested.
Oh, no, I just, you know, explain what the case is.
Explain what it is. Sure, sure. All right, thank you. Some good news. Debbie Green, President of Country Estates H.R.A., has been working for months on replacing the signs, the entry signs on all of the roads out in Country Estates. We are days, maybe a week or two? We're this close to getting the signs installed. They're sitting in my driveway, the posts, the hardware, the signs themselves, they're all ready to go up. We're just waiting for the goodwill of Troy Weekly to come out and do the installation. He is installing seventeen signs? Eleven. I always, where did I get seventeen? Did you tell me that number one time? He's gonna install all eleven signs that are going up within the next week or two. So that's the hope and the plan, so we'll see a little lipstick out there. It'll be very nice. You guys heard me mention, well, a few months ago, Vince Valetta had passed, and I came up with an idea of, Vince Valetta was on the Central Broward Water Control District Board for years. When I first got involved in the Drainage Committee here, Vince was not the chair, but he was a very active participant, and boy, did he pull for Sunshine Ranches. He was a great representative of the community. He really knew what he was talking about. I didn't really get to know Vince until I wrote his name down once and put two L's in instead of one, and from that time on, we were friends because he was always looking for people to teach about our water situations out here, to educate us on the solutions, et cetera. And he's very well-known in Sunshine Ranches by particularly the old-time residents, but a lot of people know him. He passed last year. The thinking was to name a canal, very fitting after him, so I'm working with Andy to coordinate a dedication ceremony. Don't have a date yet. When we do, we'll publicize it, but we're gonna hope to put a sign in over by his house, probably on, what is he, on Holatie there? So not sure about the exact location yet, but we're, Andy and I are gonna work out those details. The last thing I have on my list is something that occurred last night when I was heading over to Sunshine Ranches at about seven o'clock. I was coming up one ninety-eighth terrace towards Griffin Road, and we're one of the very few streets that has a streetlight at the end of the street right there on Griffin. It's been there since, long before we were a town. And as I'm riding up, out of my, the corner of my eye, I see two people on horseback. It's dark out, absolutely dark out. And I couldn't tell, I have pretty good vision, I couldn't tell whether they're on my side, whether they're on the other side. It almost looked like they were riding between the road and the guardrail, which would be massively dangerous, but it was a misperception. But I couldn't tell. I couldn't tell really where they were until they crossed. I sat and waited until they went past, until they passed. And as soon as they were right out of the light of the streetlight, they disappeared again. I don't know if there's a state law, I don't know if it's the right thing for us to do to request or require that our equestrians wear something reflective or something that lights up, similar to a bicycle or, you know, bike reflectors, because if I would've, everybody drives Griffin Road. You know how, it's probably twenty percent of our drivers that never even stop at the light. This would've been another situation like we had two years ago where the horses got killed being hit by a truck. I don't wanna wait for the next one before we take some sort of action. I don't know if this is the best action. I don't know if there's even a board we could throw this out to for some ideas, but, you know, and I don't wanna be the one that the equestrian community says, he's the one who made us put headlights on our horses. I don't know what the right answer is, but it was a scary situation for me because I stopped at the sign, but like I said, we see people all the time that just blow through the signs. They would've hit these poor guys on horses. So I don't know if you guys wanna discuss that at some point, but I felt compelled to bring it up here because this is twice, well, this is the second time there's been a near miss on my street, and it was one, I think it was two years ago, where two people on horses were crossing Griffin Road, and two horses got clipped by a pickup truck, and both horses had to be destroyed, and I think the girl was very seriously injured. The woman was okay.
They were left, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was bad.
Yeah.
Were they wearing helmets?
I couldn't tell. Couldn't see. I saw two brown horses with two dark shapes on top. Sorry?
You can put a small flashing light on the...
Well, all those things are great ideas. If you have the sense to do it, great, but if, you know, that's what I said, I don't know whether we wanna suggest it or require it.
Yeah, I think I would start, not to say this would be the start in the end, but I would start with getting a few of the trail riders together and talk to them and see what their thoughts are. You know, they have tons of experience at it. They know what people think. I just think that's, that's the place to kind of get the information to see what their thoughts are.
Good. That's all I have. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, Jim?
Mayor, I'll go. I have three things. I'll be quick. First is the traffic trailers. The one request that I've received is for Mustang. I haven't received any other requests. I'm a little disappointed. I guess maybe everybody has slowed down. I guess maybe the signs are working well enough to where they don't need to be moved anymore, but I am really surprised that I haven't gotten any more requests for these signs to be moved. They stay a week and a half to two weeks in a single place, and I would've thought there'd have been a list a mile long of people wanting those in their neighborhood to slow down, but if anyone's interested, send me an email, give me a call, I'll put you down, I'll turn that list into Tom, and we'll get the trailers moved. But right now, we got one request in, and there's two trailers sitting there, so, you know, please give me a call, do something. We didn't take the time or the money or the effort to go through this for those trailers to sit idle, so just give me a call. Second, I had the pleasure of attending the South Florida Regional Planning Council along with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. Meeting was from nine to three-thirty. They spoke about everything that's concerning Dade, Broward, Palm Beach County, and the Treasure Coast up that way. The main concern is sea rise. They're talking about raising the seawalls five foot, but that's an astronomical cost. They're looking at saltwater intrusion. Our wells out here could be jeopardized in the future. They're looking to take the canal banks and raise those so that there's less flooding. But you're talking about not hundreds of millions, you're talking about billions of dollars to do this. And the Corps of Engineers and the state and local governments and the, they just don't have that kind of money, so we're gonna be in trouble out here. I honestly see in the next probably ten to fifteen years that here in Southwest Ranches, because we are so low that, and we don't have pumps to pump things out, ours is all gravity-fed, we could really be in trouble with the water that comes in from rain, the water that comes in from the sea, you know. So I sit on these, I really enjoy sitting in these meetings. I belong with the Broward County Water Advisory Board, and I sit there, there's some very knowledgeable people, and the prospect of things getting done over the next ten to twenty years is slow, so everything's projected out thirty or forty years. I won't be around for that long, I don't think, maybe twenty-five or thirty, but not the next, but it just, you know, it's a shame that more money can't be spent on that type of thing. And lastly, I did have the pleasure last night, I think you know that all the council attend the homeowners association's meeting. I attended the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association meeting last night, and after the meeting was over, they honored two women that had been in the community close to fifty years. They've done a lot in the community, they've done a lot for the association, Ms. Sally Broken and Ms. Judy Parker. And it was really nice to see the association pay tribute to two residents that have given back to the community, so, you know, I was really honored and pleased that I was able to attend that, so with that, that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Yeah, David?
Yeah, I'm up. Last Saturday, I joined Councilmember Hartman at the WM Recycling Facility, and I learned quite a bit. It was, it really impressed me of how much they go through each day. The recycling and, from the dumping and to where it's put into the rollers, to where it's converted, they actually have human beings, people that are working a conveyor belt separating what is garbage and what is recyclable materials. And this is really important for our residents because we should do a, maybe a better job of determining what is recyclable and what is not. The town has sent out, Waste Management has sent out guidelines of what is and what is not. And their whole, whole program is if it is not, if you feel it is not recyclable, throw it in the garbage, throw it out.
Wind it out, throw it out.
Wind it out, throw it out. Because employing these, the people to go through the line, it adds costs to Waste Management, or WM. It, and in turn, those costs may be impacted upon us. So having a little diligent effort, looking at what you're throwing in recycling, look at the guidelines of what is required or what they'll allow and what they will not. Couple of things that we saw that would not be allowed, I think there was a six-foot snake that was put in recycling bin.
Grenades.
And, and you got, you took it from me.
Yep, I'm sorry.
The other one was a live hand grenade put in, in recycling. This doesn't belong in there. And I was really shocked when I heard that. I was like, people are putting live hand grenades in recycling? They actually had to shut down the facility.
So?
To bring in the feds, the FBI, come in and deal with the live hand grenade situation. And recycling, I'm just kinda wrapping my head around this, it's just really bothers my mind.
Cool stuff, though.
But in the end, hiring WM and selecting WM, I think in the broader sense was a very, very good decision for our town. My phone hasn't rang this year about a missed pickup. I don't know if anybody, any other of my fellow council members had that problem? Nope. But I wanna commend Andy and Russell. Thank you, guys. It was, it was a very, very good decision to go with WM suggest that to us, because I think it was a good decision. As Bob had mentioned, the ATVs. My call came on Monday. Ed Gonzalez called me and says, there's a whole line of ATVs that just blowing through the stop signs in Sunshine Ranches, and it's really funny, the number of times he has said to me, spike strips? I can't count them. It's just something that Ed has said to me many times. Flocking, I think each one of us were among the first flocked, and those flocking flamingos, they're out. So, and it's a great effort. It really helps out with our students in our town because every other school that our students attend, they have their own separate scholarships. This is one for our students. This money funds our students. And I actually have a next-door neighbor, DeeDee, who is interested in making an application to this. For those who applied to the barn dance, I'll see you there. We're gonna have a lot of fun. I wanna thank Davy Police for the fine work in issuing the numerous traffic citations. At the end of the month, I will have the traffic citation report and break down how many citations are issued for each district, and Sunshine Ranch is gonna lead again? At last analysis, Sunshine Ranch has led everybody in the town combined, so hopefully we can do better. I know that Drainage and Infrastructure Board, Advisory Board's working on Phil policy. I attended that meeting with the other council members, and I'm kind of interested in creating a fourth tier for additional restrictions for the extreme issues where there's a whole bunch of Phil brought in. That's something that I would support. I don't know how the other council members feel about this, but at the higher end of the Phil, I think you're dealing... the fill, I think you dealing with 100 loads plus, I think we need to have additional permit for that. And then also the extreme circumstances where we would require fill removed, I want that to be very hardly utilized. But if there is an extreme violation, there are people that have that belief that our town regulations do not apply to them. And I, and they need to know that, hey, we, we got regulations in our town to protect our rural lifestyle, we got to protect the nearby neighbors, and that's why I'm still kind of interested in a fourth tier. Vicious dog ordinance. We did, I've been, several residents reached out to me about this. The second meeting in March, it will be brought up for, I guess, the second reading. I know that when the first reading came up, I looked at it and, you know, some of you folks have heard of the movie, watched the movie, Michael Douglas movie, Wall Street, where Michael Douglas said, this has fleas? Well, that first ordinance had fleas. I wasn't, I wasn't going to support it. But I, I think it's, I think it's in a close measure that could be passed. While back, Mayor had mentioned something that he was a little shocked at asking and had to do with a helicopter ordinance. And I just want to make sure that, that is taking off.
It's taken off.
All right.
It's, it's with legal, they're, they're starting to work on it.
All right.
We may have to wait till keep comes back.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's what I expect.
All right, great, it's taking off. Great to hear that. The council's going to be heading to Tallahassee next month. And I'm in the process of planning meetings to make sure that the fireworks ordinance, that State Representative Bartleman is pushing on our behalf. If that gets some feed, I know that the mayor has spoken with very powers that be in Tallahassee, and we are further along than we were last year. And then the most important part, the real important part that I'm looking at is there were some drainage issues that we're seeking funding from, from Tallahassee. Speaking of fireworks, I know that there's the 362-day ordinance for the permits, that's something that I, I'm very interested in supporting on that. Recently, I wrote, submitted an article at a DRW having to do with climate change and well water. Most of us in the town, I mean, probably about 90% of us in the town are on well water. And there was some issues brought up last night at Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association. Senator Geller had actually acknowledged my, my concern that I wrote about, that as we had, we experienced the raising of the oceans. And that, and when I moved here in 1997, I would take a drive to South Beach. I was like, I'm living on holiday, I'd take a drive to South Beach and, you know, go see what's going on. I'm new to South Florida, see what's going on. And it was fine. Now, you go there, when, when they call the, the
King tides.
King tides. Waters are in the streets, you're driving through seawater on South Beach. That's not limited to South Beach. That, that is impacting us as well. When the saltwater is moving in toward, into the, into our lands, the water, saltwater is contaminating, saltwater intrusion into municipal wells. A lot of wells in Hollywood have already been canceled and been capped off because they're contaminated with saltwater. That saltwater is moving further and further west. Now, our neighbors in Southwest Ranches, we want to keep our water level low. That contradicts what saltwater intrusion is doing to the wells. And it's contaminating more and more wells. Last I heard, and, and I may be, my, I mean, I'm guessing Rod had said this, Rod Lay, our engineer, chief engineer for the town, that the saltwater intrusion is right along the turnpike line. It's moving further and further toward us. So it's a, not in my lifetime, but shortly thereafter, we're probably going to have to have municipal water in our town. It's not if, it's when. And hopefully, we can take measures using less freshwater, keeping the more dense freshwater to counteract that saltwater so we can keep our water, our water wells fresh. I spoke with a neighbor earlier this week in Sunshine Ranches who has a 40-foot well. It's not a very deep well.
Forty-foot well.
Forty-foot well, a very old one. And he actually has some salinity in there, some saltwater in the well, and he was told that he's going to have to go deeper. I'm down about 100, about 212 feet is where my well is, it's right about there. But when I heard about that, I was like, wow, it is really starting to impact us. So saltwater contamination of our wells is really important. And then last night, Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association, Sally Broken, Judy Parker are just very, very, very special folks. They have contributed so much to our town, and we're living here day to day, and they're, what they have done has impacted us every day of our lives in the town of Southwest Ranches, just because of what they contributed way at the beginning. Sally Broken was on the Broward County Comp Plan, and she had, which had transitioned to the town of Southwest Ranches. Judy Parker, so many, so many things that she has contributed, and of course, her husband, Bob, great heroes for our town. This is way before we were even thought of being the town of Southwest Ranches.
They're here since 74?
Yes, 74, they were, they were here since. Finally, like the council too, see where we are on an issue that hasn't been done in the town since 2019, February 19, 2019. Garage sale. We used to have garage sales, the townwide garage sale. I'd like to see if we can have this on a certain day. I don't want it to contradict with a farmer's market, but I'd like to see where we are on having another garage sale before it gets too hot. So Mr. Mayor, if you've got some ideas and ask us, let's run with it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just off the cuff, I haven't, didn't know you were going to bring that up. But, you know, we initially used to not have a central location, used to just be, hey, we'd do a big map and people would register and the map would show all the different homes that were doing it. But we cut back on that because we had, no, it wasn't COVID. What happened was the, the next 30 days after our yard sale, we had a spike in crime because a bunch of folks would come in to buy yard sale and they would also see all of these ATVs and things like that that are not for sale there, but look pretty shiny and nice and new. So then we, we kind of moved it to a central location so that you could bring your stuff to a central location. And, and that was not as successful because then you're hauling your stuff all to a central location, then anything doesn't sell, you're hauling it back to your house, which is kind of the last thing you want to do. So I think it, I, I'm, I always enjoyed it. My wife was a huge fan of it, she hated to see it not happen. So I'm certainly for it. I think it's going to take some thought to see how we would want to bring it back.
Thanks.
Yep. Is that, you're good? All right, awesome.
Out of wind.
All right, great. I just have a few comments myself, just also my congratulations to Sally and Judy. Just, you know, they typify what, what a lot of you folks that are here, we don't have a big crowd, but you all that are here, you do the same thing, you know? Just invest yourself into this town, you know, and a lot of people don't know your name, you know, we sit up here, we get, we get the name recognition and whatever, but there's a ton of folks in this town that give and give and give to make this town the special place that it is. And it was great to see the recognition for Sally and Judy who have been, you know, doing so much for our town for decades. And so it was a great, great to see that recognition and appreciate Lori and Jeff opening up their house and, and everything that the Sunshine Ranches Board and officers did to pull it all off. So a great event. Did want to do a reminder for March 11th is the barn dance, but it's also, before you go to the barn, the barn dance, Water Matters is also on March 11th. And that is not to be missed. And we, I'm, I'm, all right, I may be a little biased, but we have the best booth out there. There's no two ways about it.
By far.
Absolutely. December and her helpers do an amazing job. It is like a beautiful
Oasis.
Oasis of flowers and plants and trees and all kinds of stuff. Yeah, it's a secret garden, it's awesome. It really is. December, fantastic job every year. And so we haven't, it hasn't been around for a couple of years, we missed it because of COVID and everything. It's back this year. So I know we'll be there, we always enjoy it. And, and there's also free bonuses of, you know, it's, it's a, it's fun to go to, you see your neighbors, it's a great learning experience because you go to all the different booths and you hear what's going on and different things that, for water preservation and ways, you know, ways to be, you know, do the right thing for our planet and all that kind of stuff. So it's fantastic that way. And as you go around the booths, you get your, your card punched, and then you get to go home with a free planner too. So I know in our, in our yard, literally, I can walk around, I took December around there a couple, about a year ago, I guess, and showed her all the plants that came from Water Matters. I've got a, I've got a whole yard full, full of them. So it's awesome, it's an awesome experience and just encourage everybody to go out there. It's at Treetops Park. And I think it starts at 9:00 AM, right? 9:00 AM? Yeah.
It's eight?
Eight? Nine? The webpage says eight. Ah, that's an earlier morning then for December.
She needs to get the early to the plant.
All right, but that is, that is awesome. That is awesome event. The last thing that I did want to mention, and I want to be clear, I echo all the comments that for WM Waste Management, I think that was a huge plus moving, you know, rather than us talking about after meeting after meeting on how we can beef up our penalties to get our vendor to do the right thing, they're just doing the right thing, which is, says all that you need to say. I did have an issue come up, single issue, maybe it was a one-off, but I bring it up here because, Andy, I'd like, I'd like to make sure that we dig into this, and if it's happening elsewhere, I think we may need to have a conversation, a little higher level conversation with WM on this. But there was a resident that had some damage done by, by the truck on their, on their property. Nothing super serious, but dug up their yard, destroyed the, it needed to be re-sodded.
Bulk?
No, I think it was the regular truck.
Oh.
I think it was, no, yeah, it was not, it was not the grabber.
Okay.
It was on, it's on a smaller road where they have to go in and back out.
Got it.
So, so, so there was damage in the swale area and, and it, and so the way it works, I'll, I'll just walk through it. So the way it works is the damage is reported to WM. WM then puts in an insurance claim with their insurer. And they have to wait till their insurer approves the claim, their insurer determines that that really is your property, you're not claiming it on somebody else's property, or you're not claiming it on town property. And then they need, then they're requesting that the resident get multiple quotes for what the actual cost is to have it repaired. And then there's a lot of red tape, a lot of, what was, you know, some ruts in the yard is in December, early December, has still not been paid. The $225 to get a pallet of sod still has not been paid. The cut, the check was cut today. But that is only after many phone calls from myself, phones, text. Having that insurance company in the middle, if, you know, if it's a $30,000 worth of damage, I get it. You need to, you need, you need to do the full, the full, the full round. I get it. But for something like this, for literally $225 to, you know, wait two and a half months to get a check for $225, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a good plan. And so I think we need to, I, I want to know more about that. I want to know if this wasn't a one-off, if this is the way it normally is and we just haven't heard about it yet. And, and I want to understand it better. So just throw that out there.
It's a great way to reduce insurance claims.
It is.
Create bureaucracy with a three-month timeframe.
And why the resident, why it's put on the resident to, to prove to them that it's their property, and two, to come up with quotes
Yeah.
for what it is, that's
Terminus, that's
I, you know, it, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense. So, so I don't want that in any way to reflect on the great service they do, you know? This is, it could be a one-off, I don't know, but I want to find out. But overall, they do a fantastic job, I want to say that again. But this, I want to dig into if we can find out a little bit more about it. All right, awesome. All right, that's what I've got. Any legal comments?
No, no legal.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Pardon me, Richard.
Sure.
There's something, yesterday I sat through four hours of ethics training from the, the Florida League of Cities. They do a great job. But I wanted to mention something to those going to Tallahassee. I asked the question of the lawyers that were putting on the, the training program. They, they discussed sunshine laws pretty in detail, which was great. I mean, there, you can, you can't hear too much about it since we have to live within the constraints. And I asked, well, what about when we go to Tallahassee, when we visit with our representatives, three council members, four council members may go in at a time? How are we not breaking sunshine if we're discussing these issues? And what they recommend is the same thing we generally do with the HOA meetings. If, you know, if, if I bring something up, you wouldn't want to start debating it with me. If you want to support it, that's great, but we shouldn't get into too much into opinions, differences, ideas. Basically, the, the goal is for one person to bring an issue and discuss that issue and, you know, work with the legislator on it. And then the next council member discusses the next issue so that we can all listen, we can show up in force, we can, you know, show our support for it, but not run afoul of the sunshine laws. Are you guys clear on that? I mean, does that make sense to you? We do it all the time at the HOA meetings and at the, the, sorry, board meetings. But the same program would work up there, the same concept. So I just wanted to throw that out. What's that?
One speaker.
One speaker on a topic, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's a great reminder, great reminder, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, no legal comments tonight.
Great, thank you. All right, Andy?
I'll start with a legal comment. We always notice those meetings. When you guys go to Tallahassee, we do post notice on those.
Oh.
And including the HOA meetings as well.
Okay.
All right, now I'll switch over to administration. Just a couple of things, very briefly. We talked about the ATCs and the bikers going through town. Just let you all know that Russ and I do have a meeting with Police Administration on Monday morning to go over, you know, just multiple things, just to touch base on different things, but that is on the list, it's already on the list to talk about. So we do want to go with that. And the other thing I just want to share with you is we, we received, I got notice today that we received a recognition that, that I wasn't aware of, and it's not one that I'd ever heard of before. So I, I just want to, Jim, can you pass that down? I want to share with you, the Universal Public Procurement Certification Council.
Ah, wow.
The UPPCC, which I was not aware of, has bestowed upon the town of Southwest Ranches the Excellence and Achievement Award for 2022. The UPPCC award program recognizes municipalities' professional commitment to excellence in public procurement, including being UPPCC certified, which is the knowledge, as well as having a member of the team with the Certified Public Procurement Buyer designation. As you all recall, Vanessa had achieved that, that designation. So it's just, just one more outside acknowledgement that what we're doing is right, that we're on the right track, and these outside agencies are recognizing that. So you can take a little pride and a little confidence in the fact that staff is doing a good job with things like that. So just wanted to share that with you all tonight.
Great news, yeah, thank you. All right, okay, item number nine, resolution.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order with Corner Hand Proctor and Cross Inc. in the amount of $69,770.0 for civil engineering services. for civil engineering services for the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA funds, funded Dykes Road piping project, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this item from the council? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. This I've said several times in the past. When you have the amount of money, what part of that is grant and what part of it is, are matching to it, if there is matching? It doesn't say it and I keep tail, coming up here and saying the exact same thing. That used to be part of the resolution in the title here. It's not anymore. I'd like to see it so I don't have to come up here and say it for the next three also. So I'll only say it once and this is for nine, 10, 11 and 12. Ditto.
Gotcha. Thank you, Noel. Any other comments? Seeing none, public comment closed. Um, Emile, do we have those numbers that we can, uh, what, what portion is part of the grant? What portion, is there, if there's any matching associated with it?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may. In the staff memo, this is 100% ARPA funding.
Okay.
There's no town match. It's, it's in the memo on page, uh, 2 of 71.
Okay. And what about, uh, 10, 11 and 12? I guess we'll get there. We'll get there, but if, when we get there, if we can just, if we bring that up, let me know. Appreciate it. All right. Seeing no further comment, if we can please call the roll on the item.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 10, please.
Item number 10 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order in the amount of $58,410.0 with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc. for professional services for the next phase of the transportation, surface and drainage, ongoing rehabilitation or TIS Door program, roadway improvements, authorizing the execution of the purchase order and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on this item? I think we saw some great results, uh, already for this particular project. Yeah, Andy?
In answer to the earlier question,
Yeah.
there's zero grant funding on item 10 or 11. Those are just budgeted, uh, through the budget process.
Great. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Item number 11.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order in the amount of $66,500.0 with Craven Thompson and Associates, Inc. for professional surveying services for the next phase of the transportation, surface and drainage, ongoing rehabilitation or TIS Door program, roadway improvements, authorizing the execution of the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wow. Wow. I got, this is like in stereo.
Looks pretty cool.
Did you get that, Russell?
I got, I had the second. I got the second. I didn't actually get the first.
So Gary's the first and David's the second. Okay. Yeah. Okay, gotcha. Awesome.
Mayor, I do have one comment on this.
Yeah.
Page 39 of 71. If you'd look at that, the item, it's number four. Uh, that is a typo there. You can't go west on 54th of 166. Uh, that would be a very difficult thing to do. So you have to go east. So that's just one word that needs to be changed, that's all.
With that Scrivener's error correction.
Right.
So Avenue East, 1,000 feet.
Okay.
So I'm in, I'm in my motion to reflect the change.
Perfect.
Acquiesced to it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Jim.
Good catch, Jim.
Yep.
Well, I tried it. It doesn't work. It just doesn't work.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.